Good afternoon. Good afternoon to everybody in the old Oek building in Koror. Good afternoon to you, Ms. April Krips, Special Prosecutor for the Republic of Palau. We called you here today because we need a lot of advice. You are one of the top law enforcer in the Republic of Palau. The reason why we're holding this meeting, and we had held an oversight hearing the past couple of weeks with our Vice President and police officers, AG. But this with you is not an oversight because we're asking you for advice. And we sort of have finished oversight with MOA, MOJ. We have a lot of information and then we need to sort of do our report and then find out what our recommendation is to our President of the Senate and share with the public. So we got you here today to sort of get your input on some of the things that we have come across. And then if we have time, our Chairman of Ways and Means is here. And also a couple of new senators who did not confirm you when you were hired by Palau, the Senators Kabao, the Senators Talams, and of course myself, I was on the other side of the House of Delegates. So I didn't have a chance to confirm and sit down and discuss about your confirmation or consent. But that's basically is our approach for this afternoon. And if we have time, and you don't mind, after we have discussed about the incident at Division of Correction and other matters within the police station and MOJ, let's give us some time to ask you some questions about the office. Since we're in the supplemental budget, maybe we can have some understanding on what your requests are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So here with the committee today is our President of the Senate, Senator Baules. Next to him, to his right, is Senator Ray Meyer. He is the Vice President. Then next to him is Senator Talams, 89.9, used to be, not anymore. He's the newest member of the 11th Senate. Then we have Senator Inabo. Senator Inabo is the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, one of longtime members of the Senate, Senator Rudim. And then Senators Kabao. And I'm Jonathan, and they just call me Joe. So let me give you the microphone so you can maybe introduce your stuff that came with you and maybe do a short statement. And then give it back to me and then we'll start our public hearing. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm actually happy to be here. I only saw this here once. A time before, when I was here last week, just to see what it looked like. Some of you I've never met, and some I've, as you said, I've met, I think, when I first came here, and I've never seen you again, Mr. President. So again, my name is April Krips. I'm a licensed attorney out of the state of Florida. I've been licensed since 1988. And my primary background has been in criminal law in one form or another, involved in both state of Florida, Koshai, out in the FSM. Then I came back to the FSM and was their Secretary of Justice, Minister of Justice here, and also the Attorney General at the same time. Then I went to Russia for a few years and worked in Russia, training judges and attorneys on the new criminal procedure code for Russia under President Putin. And then came back to Florida and eventually again back out here. So I'd like to introduce my team with, for you. I have, starting from that side, Claron Rickett. Claron's been with us for three years. In the middle is Helinda Oymay. Helinda's been with the office, I think, at least a year before I came. Next to her is Joram Madluk. And Joram has been here almost the same time as Helinda, maybe six months shy of that. And to the side of Joram is Inya Tiko Mimalaya. Inya is our Assistant Special Prosecutor, and he hails from Fiji. So Inya's been an attorney for 12 years and came to us with really high recommendations, both as civil and criminal attorney. So we're glad to have him on board, and that makes up our team. Except messing with us is our administrative officer. And she's not here today because she's holding down the fort. But she's been with us since, I think Shirley retired in August, and that's when we had Margie Bab come aboard. So anyway, I'm glad to have this time to answer questions before you. I'll answer as best I can, and I'll see where we go from here. Thank you.
So let's all start then. And again, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to concentrate on the incident at Division of Correction and then up to the Bureau, then up to the Ministry of Justice. So my first question, Ms. Krips, is this. Can you describe the role, function, and duties of the Special Prosecutor's Office pursuant to law? This is just for the understanding of us, new senators, and the public who will be watching this program.
Yes. Under Section 503 of Title II, that sets out the duties and functions of the Special Prosecutor's Office. It starts out by saying that we can prosecute all violations of law, violations of the Constitution for the Republic of Palau, all state constitution violations, and all violations of law. That being said, our office traditionally, and I believe really function as primarily looking to, looking at violations of law by public officials and employees. That's also in the Title 503, it's down towards the bottom. But in between that, there's a whole gamut of reasons why we might prosecute. We also feel that part of our duty is to do what I would call outreach with the public. We want the public to understand what the violations of law are and how they can reach us. And so that's why we have a website where they can reach us, either give us their name or they can reach us anonymously. But it also helps for us to go out to the region and meet people and have them ask us questions. When I first came here, a lot of them didn't even understand who the SP was or what we did. We wanted to change that because we wanted to be an active law enforcement agency that actually does some good for the people. So we've continued to do that. As a result of that, the UN has been very helpful to us in many ways by asking us to join them on different trainings, but also by providing us training and also even this year, equipment. But they also wanted to do what we had earlier this year, I mean, late last year, I guess, December, where we did outreach with the youth in this country to get them encouraged and what is corruption and what does it mean to them. That's primarily one of the reasons we have problems when we go around the region, is to get people to understand what is corruption and what does it mean to them. Because our experience is if they don't understand what it means to them, they're never going to fight it. But amazingly, the students, both high school and college level, have been very good in understanding very quickly what corruption means to them. And they were excited about joining these programs recently and hope to continue those in the future. That being said, when there's also a conflict with the Attorney General's Office, it's possible for the Attorney General, whoever that might be, to go ahead and refer those cases to our office. Before I came here, one of the cases had been referred to our office involving, I believe it was human trafficking. And then that case kind of morphed out because of the officers involved into like nine officer case. So those cases where there's a conflict, we can go ahead and take those cases to avoid the conflict or even the appearance of a conflict. Since I've come here, there have only been two cases referred to our office from the AG's office, and there were two traffic cases. Both of them were accompanied by a letter that indicated that while they could handle the case, they thought maybe it was better for us to handle it. We did the very first case. And then the second case, when it came with that same letter, I kicked it back and I said, if you can handle it, like you said in your letter, we're going to let you handle it because we have a lot of other things to do right now besides handle the traffic case. An appearance of conflict, in my experience, doesn't mean you can't handle the case. It does mean that you need to be more maybe aware of what you're doing and how the public perceives it. The public may or may not perceive it correctly, but that can be handled through giving notifications to the public through either radio or through press releases, so that the public has a clear understanding of what you're doing and why you're doing it. And so we try to do that in all of our practice. We try to keep the public aware of what we're doing so that people understand and trust us. If they don't know what we're doing, they don't trust us. And so that's how we've been doing our office since I came on board.
Yeah, so I'll go to ask a clarification. You said something very interesting, and so I'm going to ask you this question. In Uwahara versus Republic of Palau, I think you are familiar with that case, right? You were part of that case, no?
I wasn't part of it, but I do, I am familiar with it.
About you know about it, okay.
Yes.
So in Uwahara versus Republic of Palau, the Supreme Court also held that, and I quote, "The Special Prosecutor's authority to prosecute public officials is not limited to cases where Attorney General has a conflict of interest. So the Special Prosecutor may step in to prosecute public officials regardless of if the Attorney General has a conflict of interest." How has this factor into your consideration of whether or not to investigate the incident at the prison or some other cases?
Thank you for that question. Because of different ways of people to reach us, it's not unusual for us to receive a complaint that has also already been sent over to either the Bureau of Public Safety or to the Attorney General's Office. That being said, in my experience, it is not a good idea for two agencies to be investigating a case at the same time. The reason is it can confuse the witnesses that are involved, it can cause problems of conflict in the evidence, and it can disrupt one or the other's investigation. So when we get a case where we suspect that it might be, either we know or suspect that it might be already with the Bureau of Public Safety, or if it's already possibly been reached, someone's reached out to the Attorney General's Office, we will contact them and find out. And so that's what we do. We contact them. Usually it's the Bureau of Public Safety because they're the ones that are first involved. And we tell them we have received a complaint. And sometimes we've done more than received a complaint, we've investigated some before we find out that there's someone else involved. So we'll contact them and offer to work together, or we'll offer to give them information if they want to work with us. And so that's how we have handled conflicts in the past, or possibility where there was two of us investigating at the same time. Sometimes our offer has been accepted and sometimes it hasn't. So we will follow if they're already involved. There's a case recently where they, we were told they were knee-deep involved, so we backed away. We were a little concerned, but we figured we'll wait and see if they're actually going to carry through. Does that make sense?
Have more cases?
We, do we have more cases?
Yeah.
Yes.
Than the one that the AG referred to you?
We have many more cases, yes.
Yeah. How did you get those cases? What's the source of cases to your office?
The cases that we have right now? It's a variety of sources. Sometimes, most of the time, we get a complaint to us. Usually prosecution is complaint-driven. So most of the time we get a complaint, either it's sent to us, sometimes people drop it off at the office, sometimes they call us on the telephone. More and more, they're reaching out to the website and they're dropping information into the website. Sometimes they don't call us directly, they'll call one of my investigators, they'll see them somewhere and stop them, and they'll bring it back to us. And I know this sounds kind of crazy, but quite often, we actually just stumble across cases. I'm looking for something else, or we're investigating something else and we'll fall into another case that arises. And so we may or may not open up a case that. When I first came here, another way that we got cases is when I came here, I reviewed everything that was in the office. And there was a number of things that were not moving forward, so, and I couldn't really figure out what was going on in those cases. So I put them on what we call a monitor status. A couple of those are still in monitor status. Some of those have finally hooked up so that they're now starting to make sense after four years because they hook up into something else that's occurring now.
Let me give the phone to Senators Kabao.
Thank you. This is really, I guess, a learning experience and eye-opening for me, but I, maybe I want to start by, I guess, looking at examples in the United States. I know there's political parties. And maybe that's, we do have political factions, but it's not as apparent as it is in the US. What I want to know is, do you take that into consideration? Maybe for instance, if another faction uses your office as a way to, you know, if the governor is trying to get re-elected and they're calling you that, you know, this is, you know, this is happening to kind of muddy things up. So I, my question would be, how would you handle that? You know, because, you know, it could easily, we have a newspaper editor here, as soon as they print it, people start assuming that it's true or not, right? So do you time it, that you'll do it after the elections? And how do you handle those things? Because I can't help but try to, you know, since you take complaints like readily, you know, like, hey, so-and-so governor has been using this thing. So how do you handle those kind of things? And would you take those into consideration, considering that he may be running for reelection?
Thank you. Interesting question. And I know, I know people always get curious about it. Quite frankly, I don't really care about politics, and I never have. Even as a prosecutor for, I don't know, umpteen years in Florida, our state attorney, and I think that's the way I want to be said, your job is to do justice wherever that leads, whether it's to have someone let go or have someone prosecuted. That being said, here on this island, obviously I don't know what's going on half the time. Most of the time it's in Palau and I just kind of shrug and go on. But when a case comes into the office, how it happens, when a case comes in, because I want to track the time that we're spending on the case, whether it's five minutes or, you know, five days, we assign a case number to it. Then I assign it to an investigator. Before I assign it to an investigator, I will usually talk to them and find out, are there any conflicts with them? Because obviously they're related here to a lot of people. So I choose which investigator to handle it to, based both on conflict and also what their current caseload is. And then we sit down and usually as a team, talk about it because they know a lot more information than I do. And so anytime someone files a case, for me, there's always a question as to why they're filing it. It doesn't necessarily have to be political, it could be for any other reason as well, for both business, it could be personal vendetta. So those are things that we have to look like, look at, not only when it comes in, but when we investigate the case. And that is taken into more account while we're doing the investigation. And so we have to look at it and say, this is, this is the way the case has to be investigated and put aside any distractions such as politics. Does that answer it?
If I may follow up your chair. And you don't, I guess, reveal those information or at least tell the person unless you file a case?
If we file the case, actually, there's two ways a person is going to know what happens in our cases. One, we file it, then they're going to know for sure. But when we don't file a case, we will write back and tell them the basic reasons we aren't not filing it. I haven't had a case where I've kicked it back because of politics. I have had cases where I kicked it back because I didn't think there was enough information or I thought the state itself could handle it without our intervention, especially if there's some sort of an election going on. If it seems like that, then we're likely to kick it back and say, can you look at this and here's, we may even give them direction and say, look at this, this, and this, you know. But oftentimes, especially at the state level, there are, there's laws at the state level that can allow them to handle the case without ever kicking it to us. But if they feel that they can't handle it, then of course we're going to look at it. But I don't look at it on the timetable of whether there's an election or not.
Give the phone to Vice President of the Senate.
Sure, Chairman. Thank you for meeting the committee today. My question is also about one of your case. I think I wrote a letter to you regarding that case. And that letter commended you for charging or filing a case against the former governor of Niwol. Then that letter to you was commended you for that, but asked you to look further into the case because I think he was just the recipient of the check. And I think if you issue, government issue a check without a valid contract or without license of the business, then it's the government's fault, not the former governor. So my letter went to you. I never got a response, but I don't know if you addressed that issue or not, but I think that should be addressed because it's the procurement. It's the procurement fault that paid the former governor without really looking into the documents that, is he, are we allowed to pay him or not?
A couple of things with regard to Niwol. There are several more cases in our office on Niwol, and so not all of them have been addressed. There's about two or three states that if I spent all my time on those three states, I'd never do anything else. Niwol is one of those states. However, that being said, we can't, we can't give legal advice, okay, from our office because we're not the attorney for the state or for an individual. What we can do is either write back and say, this is the law, and ask if you guys have followed the law, or if we feel that the law was completely violated, you knew what the law was, or Niwol knew what the law was, and they violated it, then it could come to us for prosecution. You probably are not going to hear back from us until we either close the case or file the case.
So did you check the Ministry of Finance for issuing checks for the contract?
I can't tell you right here what's happened on that particular case, but I can look into it and get back with you. That's the best I could do.
Yeah, that was my concern because of the, the former governor was just the recipient of the check. He was not issuing a check. The check was issued by the government, then they should have followed what was in the contract. If the contract has been terminated because there's no valid license, then they should have not issued the check. That's my concern. So I think my letter, maybe it was not clear, but it was to ask you to look further into this issue. Maybe it's the other, the issuer of the payment, or it was not Ellander.
I will have to look and see where that is at this moment and then again get back with you because sitting in here, I couldn't tell you one way or the other. I'm sorry.
Lou.
Yeah, go ahead and look into it because I think my letter was sent to you in the last Congress in the 10th Oek. So it's been a long time, so I think you should have looked into it or not. But you should look into it because that's how the system works. The procurement go through the process. If there's no valid contract because no license, then they should not issue a check. So I, that was what I was thinking at that time, that you should look into the issuer of the check, not the recipient of the check. Thank you.
Senator Talams. Inabo.
Good afternoon, SP. Thank you for attending this public hearing. I want to add my question to what the Senate Vice President has asked you. And that is, the procurement process in the government is, every time they issue a check to a vendor, they know to check the tax when they file it to make sure that they pay tax on the government revenue that went out to that company. So we're looking at the government not doing its job. As a result, we are incriminating an innocent person who probably did not recognize to the full extent that they are doing something wrong. But if the government was doing its full duty by following what they need to be following, this person would not be a criminal today. And that is so sad to me. So I think the prosecution should prosecute the government officials who did not do their job and let this innocent person who was just the recipient, maybe they didn't understand the procurement process, and that is why they're being criminalized when they are really not criminals. And that is really bothering me about this case. And I add to what the Vice President is saying. We are making someone criminal who did not have intent or probably didn't really understand the process. But the public officials who were at the Ministry of Finance, who knew they're not supposed to do this and did it, should be the ones that should face persecution to the full extent of the law. So what we're asking is making sure you prosecute the real criminals and the people who are, who did not have intent, who did not really know what's going on, should not be persecuted to, to the extent that they're, they're not being responsible for what happened. Thank you.
I'm not really sure how to answer any of these questions because I will tell you that there's not been a single person I've convicted who has not been guilty of the crime that we've charged. And I will tell you this, I look really hard at that because I would hate to be convicted. So what I do when we prosecute a case, we start from the very beginning, working with my team. We work with them in the investigation, they come with us on the prosecution so that we're all working as a team towards a goal. When we look to see whether there's any evidence of criminal activity, we also look, most of our cases have an intent factor in them. With regard to procurement, it's been in taxes and social security. It's been a real interesting learning experience as we go forward. What we found is that on the procurement, especially at, at least on one case we looked at, it started off in Public Works. And then when all of the information gets gathered from the vendor, then that information is sent up to the, to the finance to be paid or for the check to be issued. In the cases we looked at specifically, especially the Ellander case, he had received his checks, or he said he had done all the payments, he had done all of the work. And yet, in reality, much of the work had not been done. But more importantly, that case went up on, went up to the, he turned that over to the procurement, I mean, to the first step, which was Public Works. They didn't check to see... They didn't check to see if some of those taxes had been paid for social security, and what was the other, some of them along the way, but sent it up with his letter to the, to finance to be paid. They issued the check, and yet, when the, when the payments were made at tax, you know, when you have to make the payments at tax, and you have to go over to social security, never went to social security, but as far as going to tax, they had said that everything had been paid when it actually hadn't, what we're finding, and this has been happening for a long time, from at least the time that I got here, several of the agencies never talked to each other, even though they're right next door to each other. So, as a result, by the time it gets to us, we see problems at every step of the way. And then, by the time it gets to us, whether it's that case, or whether it was a case involving Angar, any of them, by the time we get it, we see errors all along the way, and we'll point it out after we're done with the case. But that doesn't, that doesn't fix the problem in the beginning, where things aren't followed through. And I don't know how to fix that, because we can't fix the whole government. We can just point out what we have found in our case. And we do that. And we did that back under President Ramonisaw. We do that currently under President Wipps. We will point out errors that we've seen along the way that have caused problems for us, but then we try to correct them in the courtroom with the person we're after. But are there other people in the government that have not done their job? I would agree, yes.
So, what I'm, what we're concerned with is, the government is not doing its job. And as a result, these vendors think that this is the proper process to go through. And these people keep doing this. But what we're actually, what the government is allowing these people to do is to commit these crimes, this infraction of the law, which you are prosecuting them for. Our concern is, we are prosecuting people who are innocent, because the government told them, this is the process that you follow. They did not require this vendor to comply with the law. And the government should be held responsible for being ignorant, or being negligent of their responsibility to follow the law. So, we are prosecuting the wrong people, and not prosecuting the government people who are not doing their job. That's our concern. So, we're not stopping these illegal activities by stopping the government people who are allowing it to go on. And that's our concern, because you're prosecuting the end person, but you're not stopping the whole criminal process going on.
I understand what you're saying. That doesn't excuse the person that we prosecuted. That means that there's more people that should be prosecuted, not less. The ones that we've dealt with have filed false documents with various government agencies, and that's how we were able to prove the case. We could say, they filed one document at social security, a different one at tax, a different one over at labor. We pull all those records, and we pull the financial disclosure statements. You check all those ones together, and you'll see that they've lied on every single one of them. That doesn't excuse the fact that there's people along the way who have not followed through on collecting the taxes, or collecting social security anywhere along the way. And so, when we question after one case, had they been back out to go check what we had found? In a case, we had found that the person said they'd only made $9,000 in a year, when we went out and sent three investigators, and two from another state, two from BPS went with us, excuse me, when we did a search warrant, and we went out there, we found out that in just the first quarter of one year, they had made $27,000. In one month, in June, they'd made $30,000. That's way beyond the $9,000 that they declared. So that vendor is a criminal. However, that doesn't excuse that once we found that these, he had lied, or had not told the truth, that doesn't excuse the government by not going back and checking. The reason that we got that they didn't go back and check was capacity, that's what we were told. They didn't have the capacity, they didn't have the manpower to go check. So, I can't, again, we can't fix the whole government, but we can expose some of the problems. And some of those problems have been exposed by the cases. I wouldn't go back and unconvict any of these people that we convicted. However, I do think that some of the problems that have taken place in this government, not only the current one, but previously, still exist, because it hasn't been existed for a long time. And I can't tell you why. I just know that it does. So, when you're asking us who to convict in that chain, how far do we go with that? I mean, who to convict in the chain of what's been not happening for years? And I understand what you're saying, that, you know, maybe the person at Public Works, and maybe the person at tax, and maybe the person, but how far up do we go? And it is an issue, and it's a capacity issue for us, but more importantly, the ones we go after, we go after because they've been brought to us. Remember, we receive complaints. So we look at those complaints, and we see if there's something there. I don't go after innocent people. I just don't. It's not, it's not in my nature. However, again, we do see problems along the way that we think need to be addressed, and it should be addressed at the government level. And if it's not, then I think, yeah, maybe there's some other people to have to prosecute, but where do you go? There's a lot of people in the chain, and it's a lot of different departments, and they all have the same problem.
So, during the investigation, when you find these officers at fault, couldn't you charge them for, because your office should clear this government up, for, from all the, all the illegal doings? If the finance paid the vendor without really checking what's, if he's allowed for this payment, because he has all the requirements, then they should check. If not, they don't check, and they just issue the payment, then we should go after them, instead of after the guy who's received the check. Or you can check both of them. Like you said, maybe they lied in some other part, but the finance, they have ordered the record, the record of payment to him, so they know how much he made during the whole year. Because I think that's, my concern is that when you investigate, and then you see another crime, then you should also charge that, investigate that crime, you know, to clear everything, instead of just ignoring that, and then just follow what you're doing. So that's my, my thought about your office. You should, I think the special prosecutor should do all the white collar crimes, and including all of this payment, just like the cases back in, back when the other special prosecutor was here. They were, the government were issuing checks to the National Congress, and later, they filed a suit, and they said, oh, yeah, it's your fault. If it was not authorized by law, then it should be corrected, not charging to receive the check without knowing why they were receiving that check. So I think, the, I think the end purpose of these investigations is the one issuing the payment, or the procurement process. And that's why we need to, a good law, to regulate the procurement, to prevent all of this from happening. Thank you.
In the procurement law that you are speaking of, especially in that case out of Niwol, the procurement laws had been followed. What hadn't been followed was their policy of obtaining from tax a write-off on what taxes had been, then been found. Again, that, the one that we had received the complaint on is the one who wasn't paying taxes by reason of the fact that he filed false documents with the government. We find, as we're going through these cases, the one out in Angar, the one, there's a couple of other cases I can't, states I can't think of. When we go and investigate these cases, after we start to pull all the information, and as we're actually, after going after the person who received the complaint on, that's when we often will find additional information, like, was social security paid? Well, what's amazing to me here is, a lot of the government, it seems to us, runs, and it has run since I've been here, on the willingness to just voluntarily pay stuff. So, when someone starts a business, they get a, they have a list of what they're supposed to do. If you have, if you have employees, you're supposed to pay taxes. If you have, you know, if you don't have employees, and it's just yourself, you pay for yourself, and again, you pay taxes, but you have social security. Those are parts that everybody that goes into business knows they have to do. Where it fell through is that they told, someone, and I, we have several cases in the office, we have businesses that are going into tax, and filing their one, tax 100, tax 200, and they say they don't have any employees. And what's amazing to me is, when you look at that, you know, when we look at that, and we're like, they don't have any employees? Well, then, why are you paying a business license for the last five years, if you don't have employees? And how is it that you are then doing something out of your business? How come you don't have any employees here, and yet, you've had, you've had to buy this, or pay this for rent, or pay this for a lease? Something's wrong. And so, once we start seeing something wrong, we start to dig, and that's how we get into our cases. And so, a lot of times, we kind of do it backwards. We don't necessarily see the taxes, or see the social security upfront, but we question the documents in front of us, because that's part of our training. That questioning part would be helpful if we could get more of the government to question what they see in front of them, because to us, it doesn't make sense. And so, I would love to clean up the government. We're just not going to be able to do that. We're going to be able to show what we show, and bring it out, and then go to the government. Now, there may be times that we could file a case against someone. I haven't gone back and seen that yet. But right now, it just seems that people accept from each other that everyone's telling the truth when they go in and file these documents, instead of being skeptical when the documents come in. And maybe that's just me, I'm skeptical. So I start to look, and I see the problems. But that doesn't necessarily seem what, what happens here. Does that make sense?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Nice to see you again. I tried to distance myself from you like March last year. I don't know if I can speak to you today, but I want to make a follow-up question. I think one of the concerns that we raise is the issue about the contract, the agreement that the government enters into. And it's the responsibility of the government, whoever person is authorized to authorize the payment of tow checks, if the agreement, if the vendor doesn't fulfill the obligations under the contract. And whoever official will authorize the payment for finance to release, I think what they're saying is, we should go after those people, because under the contract, the obligations are not fulfilled, and yet, they disposed the check. Anyway, I want to mention the recent incident at the corrections facility. There was a young person who was killed, and after a few days, the chief of corrections was rotated to be the chief of criminal investigation, which was delegated to investigate the incident of the prisoner who died. And then, which was not, the rotation was not made under the civil service regulations, according to our legal counsel. And at the same time, the Attorney General has been appointed as acting director of the Bureau of Public Safety. Wouldn't that raise a conflict of interest, or potential conflict of interest, or ethical considerations, that warrant your office to take that case?
So, if I understand this right, the chief of the jail was moved to chief of CID. Is that correct? That's part one? Okay. And then, part two, is that the Attorney General was appointed as the acting director?
There was a rotation.
Of the five?
Among the chiefs. And the chief of corrections was rotated to the CID.
Okay.
Which was, according to our legal counsel, was, did not follow the prison rules and regulations. And the Attorney General didn't know about it. And recently, the Attorney General has been appointed as acting director of public safety. And that raises a conflict of interest, or potential conflict of interest. Wouldn't that warrant your office to look into that case, to investigate what happens in the prison?
Say that one more time, the last part you said?
Wouldn't that rises to your office to look into that case?
Wouldn't that, okay. So, with regard to the person, the chief at the jail that became chief of CID, or at least act temporary chief, whatever they are, since the jail is being investigated, yes, and now it's being investigated by CID, I believe, then yes, that's a potential conflict at that point. As far as the AG becoming the acting director of public safety, that could be a problem for any case that comes before the AG, that arises during, under that, potentially could be a problem for any case that arises while she is the acting director of public safety, if a case comes up under that umbrella. Right now, again, I haven't known what happened on the person from chief of jail becoming person of CID. Could we investigate this, or could this come to us to avoid a conflict? Yes. Has, there's only been one person that I've spoken to about a possibility of that happening. And again, I didn't realize the conflict. The acting AG thing, has that been recent? The acting public safety?
Yeah, the Attorney General, Mr. Neil, has been appointed as acting director of public safety.
To me, between the combination of those two things, it's most likely a conflict. We would normally not step in unless there was a referral to our office. And again, to me, there's a lot more problems with the jail than just this, but this is the most recent one. This one is the conflict you're talking about. And so, are you asking why we haven't stepped in, or are you asking us to step in?
Under the, under the current law, if there is a potential conflict of interest by the Attorney General's office, then your office should...
Right. Normally, if there's a... Normally, if there was a conflict, or a perceived conflict, yes, it would come to us. At this point, there has been no communication with our office from the AG's office referring anything to us. If we were to step into this case, if we were to step into this case, there would be some things that we would need to have handled. Number one, we probably are going to need more resources to do it. However, that being said, we also would need there to be a clear understanding that we were the ones in charge of the investigation, and that there would be no runaround on the other side. And so, that would be something that would have to be worked out. It's possible to work it out, it just has not come up yet. And because there's other issues involved that are likely to hit this country, including the possibility of a lawsuit, that would be something that would be better done earlier than later, in my opinion. than later, in my opinion.
Sula, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam SP. I think the question is, if the law enforcers or the officers of the government, or the Ministry of Finance, or the Ministry of Justice failed to do their duties, can they be charged with something from your office? Can you charge them with something if they failed to, to do their duties?
If there's a failure to do duties and it's a clear failure of, of something that was in place, from the outside, on a case like this, emotion is what initially hits everybody. And so everybody feels like somebody failed. And that's quite possibly true. However, until we would look into it, we wouldn't know what the failure of duties would be. But in that failure of duties, in a, in a situation such as this, where there was a death of an inmate in the care and custody of the government, in this case, the jail, then there could be more than one failure. It could be a failure from training. It could be a failure from actual violation policies. It could be a failure of not having set up something in the first place. I, I will be honest, I have never been inside that jail. It's not a place that I want to visit, however. So I don't know how they run.
So the question is, if you say the failure of the system, the people involved failed to do their duties because of lack of training, then is there, can they be charged with something because they failed to do their job according to law?
There could be charges, both criminal and civil, depending on what the investigation showed.
And then can incompetence or can that be used as a defense to wash their hands off something that went wrong?
Can incompetence be used?
Yeah, because they, they claim that they were not trained, they were not trained or...
I would have to see...
Or would that be the failure of the, the manager of that division or agency?
If...
Because it should come...
Right. If folks aren't trained properly in general, and I'll just speak from my own experience in, let's say, the FSN. If they're not trained to do their job, then that's a problem of, of the system. But it could be a problem for the manager. It could be whoever's in that chain going up.
In a command. So maybe not necessarily the guy on the street, on the, the front line, could be the supervisor or the chief or the director. In your line of work, can you follow up? Can somebody be charged because of the failure of, to perform their duties according to law?
It could be a failure to perform your duties, but it would have to be something that's been delineated in the law that they violated. It can't, normally just pure negligence is going to be a civil case. It can be criminal negligence takes it to a different level. It's like this was the law and you so went against that law that everybody would know that not to do that. So it would depend on what the, the circumstances of the case showed. And that investigation would include looking at how the jail is run, what are the protocols, whether or not there's any mandates in place. There's so many things that would be involved in deciding who or what could be charged.
Okay. So if a, if a government employee or an officer has a duty, they're bound by law to perform that duty or a job. If they fail to do that job, they could be liable for failing to do their job. Am I correct? Sula, thank you.
Senator Bolasin. Good afternoon, Special Prosecutor. I want more clarification about what they've been discussing, Senator Mariur, Senator Inabu, and Senator. If there's no case reported to you, you don't just go around and look for anybody and then investigate unless there is a report? Yeah, I just want to clarify that. Because the way it is, it looks like you go around and look for who is guilty and what do investigations. I want that to be clear. So you don't go around and prosecute or file a case without anybody report the case to you in the beginning?
The only time that we, there are times that we stumble across cases. And I'll give you an example. This is probably the prime example that I can think of. When we were getting together to try to get a search warrant together, both for Harvest Hotel and also for Angar State with regard to a possibility of, of labor trafficking, we needed to meet somewhere. We have no place to meet in, in Koror. So we happened to be at the gelato shop having discussion and the owner of the gelato shop had suggested, he heard us over talking, not having a place to meet. And he said, it's COVID and we're not open in the afternoon or we're not open in the morning. I think they closed at 10:00. You could meet here if you want to, just close the lights off when you leave. We're like, okay. So then we met with BPS, FIB, and our people because there had been a direction that we had been told about from the Ministry of Justice. It had come within the Ministry of Justice at that time, which was under President Romanosaw, that they not work with the Office of Special Prosecutor. So we found people in different agencies who would work with us quietly so that we could get our job done. So we all met at, at the gelato shop. At noon, we went outside and a woman, we heard scream, and then a man ran by with a purse. And then I'm like looking at my officers, I'm like, go. So they all went after him. They caught him. As they came back, I saw Ms., Investigator Oume, and I said, hey, two guys that were chasing him went into that building next door. We should go see if they're witnesses, right? So we walked over there and then they said they didn't speak English. So we walked back into the gelato shop and I asked Mr. Tansella, do you know who owns that building next door? And he's like, yeah, Barbara Tuloff. And I'm like, Barbara Tuloff? I didn't, I thought, I only knew her as a board member. And he's like, yeah. I'm like, I pay rent to her. And I'm like, you pay rent to her? And I'm thinking, I'm sounding like an idiot. But I finally just asked him. He says, yeah, yeah, I pay rent. So he told me the amount of rent. So I look at Clarong, who happened to come by, I said, go check and financial disclosure statement and see if that rent was disclosed. And that's how we stumbled on that case. Does that make sense? So sometimes we stumble on cases. But sometimes, most of the time, in my entire experience of being prosecutor, it has always been complaint-driven. There's so many complaints that come to us. We don't have to go looking for crime. Sometimes it smacked us in the face. But most of the time, we, someone gives it to us. And that's how we see it.
Okay. The reason why I ask that, let's try to clarify the case of former governor of Ngual. The complaint you receive is about the governor, right? The complaint you receive is about the governor, former governor of Ngual. There was no complaint you received about the procurement officer or the process of issuing the check. So you did not go there to investigate?
We received an anonymous complaint that he had a contract with the government but never paid taxes. That was the complaint that we received anonymously.
Okay, about the governor.
Yes.
But there was no complaint about the procurement officer or issue of the check to you. So you did not go and investigate?
No, that's not what we, that's correct. We, we went after what we were given in the complaint.
Okay. I just want to clarify it because they might think that you were biased. So you just investigate one side and you did not investigate one side when the people think the, you should have prosecuted the government officials who issued the check.
That's correct. But what we did see, as we went through, to, to answer both of their questions, what we did see as we went through, we first, we didn't know the process. So we interviewed, I think we started out with Public Works, which was unusual that they would be involved anyway because it was not a contract normally that would have gone to them. So we started off speaking with Mr. Malirai to understand how that contract worked. And that's how we found out that he, his normal practice was to ask for, it's not part of their requirements, but they would ask for a sign-off from Finance to make sure that the, that the taxes had been paid.
Okay.
And then he would get that information and then he sends all that information with the recommendation letter up to Finance. Then we questioned Finance, why would you pay on this if you didn't see the taxes had been paid? And they're said, when it comes to us at Finance, all we see is that whatever the person who is in charge of the contract, which in that case was Brian Malirai, if he tells us that this contract has been fulfilled, and that's what we look at. We look to see, what are they saying? Has it been fulfilled? Meaning, has he provided those services? And then they issue the check. Now, does that leave a gap? We think there's a gap there. But is it a criminal gap that we would go after? Probably not. But it is a gap that we point out to the government? Yes. When we went back and we spoke with Mr. Malirai, then I, next thing I looked at is I looked at all the people on this thing. Remember, when they sign off to give the contract, it says there are certain things they're going to do. Having a license is one of them. And yet we had a sign-off from four people on that thing in the, in the government. You had the AG's office, you had Casimir Romanosaw, you had the defendant, the governor, and I can't remember who the fourth person was, but there were four. And they'd all signed off on it, saying, yes, this person's good to go. And yet none of them checked for the business license. He didn't have a business license. So those were things that to us were gaps in the law. They may not be criminal, but they, but they certainly, to me, when someone, when you all were like hiring me to be the SP, I went through everything, you know? You made sure I had a license, yeah? So I, I couldn't understand why, why you wouldn't check on that license at the beginning. So I think there were points all along the way that failed. And, and that's not the only contract or procurement contract that follows that kind of behavior. But you're right, sir. On this case, we got the complaint strictly on him failing to pay taxes. And then we went and looked at financial disclosure statement and found that instead of declaring all the money that he made on that contract, which was like $1.3 million, he, he declared $14,000. So that's why we went after him. You know, he wasn't an innocent person. But that doesn't mean there weren't other problems along the way that we found as we did the case and went back to the government afterwards and said, this is a problem. So that's how we try. We may not see it as a, as an automatic criminal violation, but we still may see it as a problem for the government. And we will come back to the government and say, this is what we found, and hand it to them. And then we go and do our next case. Does that clarify it a little better?
Yeah. I, I just want to clarify it because they might think you are biased. So you just show the other side and you don't go after the, and... Okay, I'll let him follow up and then I'll continue.
Yeah. And I, I think that's the question I raised. That, you know, when, when you issue a payment, you have to see all the, all the documents, you know, before you issue the payment, instead of just hearing the, the telephone or agreement from all the other people that it's okay, you can go ahead and process. You have to check the, and I think that's a failure of the government. So you should go after the government for not following the, the law, procurement law. Not, not just, okay, if the, if the former governor violated the tax law or anything, charge him then. But then the government that issued the check without going through the, the whole process and verifying all the documents, they should be fined for not doing their job. So when you're investigating and then you find something that's look, you should also make a turn and then investigate that to make sure that everything is all clear, not just one. Sula, please.
Um, SP, I, I've been a CFO on private companies that receives government payments. And as soon as we filed the tax return, the tax office calls us and asks, why isn't this check from the government not reported on your tax return? So I know they monitor those things. And if they did that and the case that, of the former governor, he would not be a criminal today. So if you're comparing what they did with the other tax, other vendors with this vendor, then you'll know that this process is in place. So you can question, why didn't the same process apply to this vendor, particular vendor? And because the government fails to do certain things, innocent people become criminals. And that's, that's not right. And that's what we're trying to say, that maybe we're persecuting the wrong person who did not have intention of, because I know the government knows who has business licenses. They know who pays how much taxes. They check the returns of all the companies that receives government checks. So there should not be an exception, is, is what we're concerned about. And then if we are not investigating this part of the government not doing their particular responsibility over certain transactions, then we might be allowing more cases to happen and more people who are not criminals or did not start with criminal intentions becoming criminals, which is not good in our small community. So that's why we're concerned about not checking why and who signed without checking. Because we know the procedure is there and it's applied every time to other vendors who receive government checks, especially big checks. Thank you.
Continue, Senator President. Thank you. Now I want to bring us to the Minister of Justice Department. I don't know if you have heard the full information about the police station that right after the firing of Director of Public Safety, there was a shift of all the chiefs. So they moved the chief from Correction Jail to Fire, Fire Department. And they moved the, from the Fire to the Patrol. And then they shift them all around. Our concern is the Civil Service Board rules and regulation about the employment of the government. We feel that what they did is violating the rules of Civil Service Board. Because every time there is a vacant, there should be announcement. And then somebody have to apply to that position. Now, what happened? There was no announcement. They shift them all around. And they did not get their approval that they would be shift them to the other division. Now, President left, so he appointed Vice President to be the acting director of public safety. And then the Vice President left, so President appointed Attorney General to be the acting director of public safety. Now I heard you mention something about the Attorney General being the acting director and then, so my question is, wouldn't that be kind of conflict of interest if Attorney General become the acting director? And if he, she is the acting director during the absence of director, how would she, would she be allowed to direct the investigation of the police officers? And what happened in the jail? police officers? And what happened in the jail? And then they make a report to who is Attorney General to prosecute the case? Let me have answer for that before I continue.
As far as the creation of a possible conflict, it would seem, based on the scenario you just presented, that that would be, or could be seen as a conflict of interest. Because if she's directing the officers who are thereafter going to turn around and hand her the case to prosecute, then you've got a complete closed circle instead of having independent agency prosecute with regard to the investigation. But that being said, we investigate and prosecute within our own unit, you know? So, is it possible? Maybe. But does it give the appearance in this case, especially of this particular case, of being improper procedure? Not improper, but possibly raising a conflict? Yes, I would say it raises a specter of a conflict.
Okay. Another thing we ask you to look into it is the rotation. Because the chief of jail is still having that title as a chief of jail when he is in the fire. And the chief of the fire is in the patrol. And he's still getting the title of being a chief of fire. So, we want you to look in that. If there was a violation, how we correct that and who will take responsible for that? I don't know if it's a crime or what, but there is a violation as we look at it. So, we ask you to look at it and because we still, and the reason why we have this is because of that situation in the jail. And let me further. Now, there was a juvenile who was molested in the jail. And I don't know if there was a jail case file already about that juvenile who was molested by another inmate?
As far as I know, that case with the juvenile is being investigated by CID.
Yeah. And you know, those are some of the concern we have that we feel they're not doing enough job to investigate. So, we feel there should be independent investigator to go in there and investigate the truth. So, they might be covering up something there to protect their own people there, or to avoid more, yeah, in jail. So, we feel that in any case that happened in jail, like the drug case that they lost, we feel that wouldn't that be possible for you to go there and investigate it? So, the public will know the truth? In that case like that, are you waiting for somebody to file a complaint or write to you to look into that? Then you do it? If not, then you don't do it?
I wish. I, with regard to the juvenile case, also with regard to what just happened there with the case involving the young man that died, again, we did check to see what was happening on those cases. And both of those cases have been turned over to CID. Is it, based on the information you're giving me here, is it possibility that you should, that someone from the outside should come in, whether it's us or someone else? I think the answer to that is yes, for several purposes. One is that no matter what happens, no matter who investigates these cases, I believe it would be in the best interest of Palau if you brought in an independent jail inspector. Those are inspectors that are routinely, that we have in United States. I know we have them in other countries as well. The purpose of a jail inspector is to come and make sure that the standards are maintained, to check any incidents like this that have happened, to give an assessment of both the physical building and the actual training that's done within a jail or a incarceration standpoint, whether that's a prison or a jail. And then that inspector, who is independent, makes a report back to the government to say, these are the violations that we see. Those violations happen both at an international and a national standards. I know from the time that I've gotten here, that there have been allegations of problems at the jail through various reasons. I also know that at least one of our justices have indicated that they would not put anybody in that jail because it did not arise up to the, unless they were a harm to themselves or others, because it arises, it doesn't meet the international standards. So, for one, regardless of whether you ask us to investigate or you bring in someone from the outside, I think it would be best for Palau if that happened at this time because we seem to be having a series of violent acts taking place. I know I read what the Vice President had said about there being an overcrowding situation. In cases of a confined population, it is not unusual that you are going to have more people who are not only anxious, but perhaps violent or depressed. Right, right.
You agree with us that there is a conflict of interest somewhere in the police station, considering what happened? Discussion from Palau's, from President of the Senate. You see the conflict of interest. I just gave you a copy of the appointment of President Whips', delegation of Adori P. to make AG an Acting Director. You have it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, my staff is getting you a copy of the rotation of the seven chiefs that were rotated for the purpose of cross-training or whatever. This was reported by the Vice President. That rotation that the President is talking about was initiated by the Vice President, who is the Minister of Justice. Okay, now. So, you see there is conflict. You agree with us that there's a possible conflict within the Ministry of Justice, especially the Bureau of Public Safety, as far as police officials investigating their own selves for their own mistakes. Do you agree with that?
With regard to the information you gave me here today, sir, yes.
Yes, okay. Now, in Uwahara versus Republic of Palau, and you have a copy of this because I gave it to you, the Supreme Court of Palau held that the Office of the Special, this Office of the Attorney General and the Special Prosecutor have concurrent jurisdiction to prosecute public officials. So, the Special Prosecutor may begin an investigation into public officials, even if the Attorney General is also investigating. What steps have you taken so far to consider or begin such an investigation in relation to the incident at the police, at the prison?
Okay. Just to look at the O'Hara case. The O'Hara case was being discussed because someone made a complaint that the special prosecutor could not investigate. And that's when they came out and said, the Attorney General and the special prosecutor have concurrent jurisdiction, meaning either one of us could do it. Now, that-
So, can you do it?
Yes, we can do it. However, it doesn't say that we should do it at the same time.
No, that's not what my legal counsel tells me. So, we're different on that. However, so you're not, so you're not going to take any steps to do anything until the Chairman of JGA asks you to do it?
No.
If I were to ask you by a formal letter, would you do it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That being said, I need to explain to this body that in my experience, it is a really bad idea to have two different agencies investigating the same facts-
Since you've been here, Mr. Griggs, didn't you have a class with Attorney Ernest Dingingal on one or two cases? Since you've been here? Wasn't there a case where she was, she initiated it and filed and then you came in and then you filed and then there was a little drift between you and-
No. What had happened in the one case you're talking about, that was involving Gia Ren. In that case, the Anti-Human Trafficking Office came to us in January and asked us to investigate with her. We began that investigation in January. And in February, we were still an ongoing investigation. One of her officers wanted to go off of that case and work on something else. So, unbeknownst, the rest of us who were working that case, he went to the Attorney General's office and asked them to write a search warrant on Gia Ren. None of us knew about that because we weren't ready to do a search warrant. We were still investigating to go after some other public officials. When that happened, that forced us to file the case quickly before the evidence disappeared. That's how that case came up. We never, we never investigated that case while they were involved. They weren't involved at the time. He pulled them in unbeknownst to the rest of us. The reason I state, and I need you to understand this, I'm hoping I can get this point across, the reason that you don't want two investigating agencies doing it at the same time is that it causes confusion for the witnesses. It causes possible conflict in the evidence. And it causes confusion for the investigation because officers don't know who they should be answering to. I'm not saying we cannot do this investigation. All I'm saying is that if you are asking, if this body is asking us to investigate, we need to coordinate through the executive branch and say, we will come in and investigate, but we need to be the primary investigations and ask them to either stop their investigation or turn, and turn all their stuff over to us. That needs to occur for you to have a clean investigation. Does that-
Expect a letter either from me as the Chairman after I consult with the Senate President and the official, whether to see that's what we want to do. But it's coming. Because here's, here's the deal. There's no way, in my mind, that a 21-year-old kid dies and so far, nobody has been charged from the officer's side. Or there's no, there's no investigation going. There is nothing going. And the people of Palau are wondering, what does the SP does? Because the people of Palau knows that the SP is an independent agency. Yeah. You have to write according to my lawyer. You have the absolute power jurisdiction over cases like this. And I think you should take a step forward. If you need a letter from a Chairman of JGA, and that's good enough. If you need a letter from the members who are here, I'll get you that letter tomorrow. But we want to do something. Because we cannot just sit and are, but this is not a banana republic, Ms. Griggs. We want to be like a developed judiciary-wise, economic-wise, whatever-wise. And then have you do your part. Because I opened this hearing this afternoon by saying, you are one of the two top law enforcer of this republic. So, please, take it into your heart to start looking at the possibility of getting there. And grow up your sleeves and you and your investigators and do something.
We will look at the possibility of doing this investigation. We are going to need additional resources. And that being said-
We'll find you resources.
Okay.
That's our job.
And then-
You sound like that guy from during Trump administration, Quid Pro quo or whatever?
Oh, no, no.
Are you, are you, are you trying to tell us I do this, you do that?
No. I'm just telling you that you-
You're like a quid pro quo or whatever. What's that term?
Fugue.
Yeah? Yeah, you give this, I give you the war guns and ships and... No, I don't accept that.
I'm not asking for quid pro quo. I'm trying, asking for the tools to do our job.
I'm telling you, do your job, and we will do our job. You have a request pending in the West End Committee that's being entertained.
Okay.
All of us knows about it. But I'm begging you, I'm appealing to you, do something. Because AG cannot do anything at this time. His people cannot do anything at this time because it's totally conflict of interest. You don't have to go to law school to learn that. Okay, Maria? Now, I'm going to ask this last question, or maybe just the last. And I want to hear your truth, feeling about this question. In your opinion, how can Ministry of Justice ensure that its investigators are impartial, unbiased, when they are investigating persons and events that happen within their own ministry? Do you think it is even possible?
Let me start backwards. It's always possible. However, when you're assigning investigators to cases like we do in ours, you have to know the investigators that you're assigning and you have to know that they have not both the capability and the moral fiber and the ethical ability to do their job. Does that exist in the Ministry of Justice? I think some of it does, yes. But I'm not the one making that call. I don't know who's assigned and I don't know what their capabilities are. But I think, yes, it's possible. And it has to be if this is going to be a country. And I do believe it's possible. But you've brought up reasons why it's best maybe to look outside.
This is another statement I'd like to make to you for consideration, because I know you're going to take this case and look into them. The investigation, I hope, when you get in, should not be limited to just the Bureau of Prisons or the specific unit within the Bureau of Prisons that was on duty when the incident occurred. But instead, should reach higher up into the ministry, addressing systems issues like rotation and cross-training. In the criminal justice system, in your opinion, would that necessitate an impartial investigator from outside of the ministry?
If you are investigating the entire Ministry of Justice or possibility of it, then yes, I would think you'd have to go outside the ministry.
Madam Special Prosecutor, when the Attorney General appeared before this committee, she said she wasn't aware of the rotation of the chiefs for the divisions. They didn't even ask for her legal opinion on it. Now, she's currently the Acting Director. I guess you can see what, you know, I used to be the minister. You have to clear everything to the Attorney General as part of the executive branch. The second point that I want to make is she was not, she's not even aware, the Attorney General is not even aware of the project that's ongoing within the executive branch with a stable coin. They did not ask for her legal opinion. Yet, they've already signed a contract to actually go ahead with this project. Every contract that obligates the government of Palau needs to be cleared by the Attorney General. Is this complaint enough for you to take action? Or, again, do we- Or again, do we need to write a letter to you?
With regard to the contracts that the executive is doing, I'm not part and privy to those contracts. I don't know whether the AG knew or not. I know what you said she said to you. I don't know what legal advice the president is getting. But it sounds a little like you're asking me to look at everything that this president is doing and whether it's right or wrong.
Well, I would hope that either you or your staff actually watches our hearing with the Ministry of Justice. At least you would know what's going on. Yes. And we did ask the same questions. That's why I'm asking you. If you did watch those hearings, you would probably are aware of what we're trying to do here, and at least try to come up with, I guess, an act to do something. I would hope that you, your staff, watches the hearings for all the Oek hearings.
My staff watch the hearings, and they translate.
And so I would hope that what we asked the Attorney General, and when she sits there and says, "I don't know what's going on," it scares the Congress. You know, you're obligating the government of Palau without even clearing this as the top lawyer for the government of Palau. Every contract that obligating the Republic of Palau needs an approval by the Attorney I know that. I think an Attorney General that's been in the government for how many years, the president of Palau should know this, yet it's not being done through the Attorney General's office. There's a lot of stuff that are happening within this government that are not going through the office of the Attorney General. And I would hope that by this hearing, that we at least, that will give some assurance to this Congress that there are people like you that are responsible for making sure that the laws of the republic are followed, that you seek to follow. Thank you, Madam Special Prosecutor. Thank you, Chair.
Last, Senator Mario Bilbo. Chairman, so long. Yeah, I support what Chairman and Senator Sangavu have said, but I have some comment on some of the cases or some of the activities that you have done and which I don't support. You said that you have an outreach program, and I thought, I don't think that's Indian responsibility to educate the public. I think the Republic of Palau hired you to prosecute or to do investigations and prosecute the breakers of the law, not to do outreach. I think outreach is a responsibility of the domestic affairs. They're the one who educate the public on the new laws and anything that's about the government. Domestic affairs is responsible for that. And I saw one of your programs where you had like an awareness program where the case of former Vice President Bells. I think he sued the former director of Public Safety for depositing funds into his private account. And we never got to see what happened because it's illegal. It's unconstitutional to get the money for the republic into your personal account. It should be into the Ministry of Finance, Treasury, and then out and be paid out by the purpose of the grant or whatever, or appropriated by the government or without law. So we never got to see what happened, what happened to that. Is it illegal to do that, or is it legal? And you said it's a public education, and I think we need to know. We need to know, how did that happen? And that's why I said that maybe you're looking, and it is a good program to do outreach and bring that throughout the republic. But I think that's not in your area. That should be resting the domestic affairs. So those are my comments, Chairman. And I think that we need to look into that. Because what they've been saying are the issues of the government that we should be dealing with. In all the cases that you have brought up during this hearing, we should be looking at those. Thank you.
Sula, Chairman Isala, thank you very much, Special Prosecutor. Talking with you in the past, I'm supporting your office here. I know you have a lot of things that you're looking into, and you don't have enough resources to do it. And there's a supplemental budget that the president submitted to Oek, and there's $150,000. He's requesting to fund your office. And I hope that Chairperson of the Waisian Minis Committee will go upon you and your staff to testify about that $150,000. And I would like to ask you, when you come, give the opportunity to your Palawan investigators to speak to this honorable Congress. That's all I ask from the Chairperson and this Congress. So we will understand what you are going through with your work at the Special Prosecutor's office. Thank you.
So the question is, would ESP office look into the case of the missing Chinese individual who allegedly, allegedly in the hands of Chinese authorities? And if this is true, were there any extradition agreement? Have you heard about the Chinese who disappeared a few weeks ago? Evidently, our colleague there thinks that, maybe here the rumors, that he has left the country from this note that I got from his staff to ask this question. I'll give you a chance, and I'd like to hear from my fellow Palawans who are working with you.
We've heard what everyone else has heard with regard to both what's been in the paper and what we heard maybe on the street. That being said, we've heard additional information that I have reached outside of this country to security personnel to find out if it was true or if there's anything that would be of assistance or concern to Palau. And right now, we haven't had a response to that. With regard to whether or not there was really a second ship involved, we haven't been able to determine that yet. And I don't know where the investigation is with the Bureau of Police. We met with Director Agwan before his termination and told him we'd received information and did he want to work together with us, and he didn't. So I don't know where Palau lies on that. As far as I know, you don't have an extradition treaty with China, because I don't think it relates with them.
It sounds like you're working on this thing.
We had received information, but we hadn't gone beyond that when we realized they were investigating and didn't want any assistance.
All right. Now I got it. You need our letter to do what we're asking you to do today, right? Does anything move you? ... Those are facts, and here are news. I hope we don't stop here. You've got to be smarter. Knowing the facts behind this Chinese guy, a one-time employee...
Sula, Chairman, Madam Special Prosecutor, Madam Special Prosecutor, I think is the concern of this country becoming, entering into lawlessness due to lack of prosecution or follow-through. And then the other concern that we hear from the public is a possible collusion between officials and the problem makers, including politicians also. And so that kind of leads to the risk of this country running into lawlessness. So I think it kind of enhances the importance of your office, which has to be independent. As you hear from my colleagues, they're kind of asking you to oversee the system, kind of check and balance what's going on, why the delay, why the lack of persecution. Is your office being politically weaponized? Or is the AG's office being politically biased? I think that's the challenge we're looking at. But at the end, the people suffer because of the lack of persecution. And I'm going to speak in Palau quickly. Important cases, immigration, labor, human trafficking, I get a while left out of the system. So the ball drops between you and the AG's office. I think that's the problem we're looking at. And that essentially becomes lawlessness for the republic. So we're asking you to, I think, investigate the investigator. When I hear the comments, you have to check the system. The politicians have to be checked, the officials have to be checked. Are we doing our job? That's why I asked the question. Can you charge anybody for the lack of performing their duties? That was the reason for my question. If we failed to do our duties, can you charge us? Can a complaint be filed? So either we have to resign or be terminated or demoted or suspended. That was the reason for the question. And then another question from the public is, I think, are you going to be able to renew your contract or are going to be reappointed for the next five years for the republic as a special prosecutor?
We will look into cases that we need to look into. I cannot guarantee this body that we will take up a case if there is already an active investigation going on. However, if we are asked to take the lead on these investigations and we can get the agreement to take that lead, we have no problem doing that. As we do these cases, and there's other cases we have that are going to have to step by the side until we do these, and that's okay. But I just want to make sure you understand that. That second question on whether I stay on... I have been asked by the president if I would consider a second term. I told him that, yes, but not quite the same as his first five years. Because as I'm here, things, you know, I have to check home too. So I also said, the other thing, Mr. President, is that it's just not automatic. I think I have to be reconfirmed by the Senate again or by the Congress. And so I don't know how that would go. I don't know if he's going to put me forward. But the other thing is, is my contract ends August 5th. It's about four months from now. And I would have to know before I got repatriated if that was going to happen. And I don't know how that happens because I haven't been here before. So I'm open to the possibility of staying longer, but there are some things that would need to be taken care of, and I need to go home and take care of my home for at least a couple of months. So those are things that I've mentioned to him, and I guess when he comes back, we'd have a chance to discuss it further. But I don't know how that all works. I don't know if he's going to intend, especially after this hearing, if he's going to go ahead and want me to stay another five years or how the Congress is going to feel about that. But I'm open to that idea because we still have more work to do.
Chairman, special prosecutor, I think for your reappointment, I think we have a case study here, Mr. Sangavu. It's a two-term minister who didn't require ratification from the 10th Senate. He was a minister in the 9th Oek, a minister in the 10th Oek, and the executive branch at that time didn't require official ratification from the Senate. So just for your information. Chairman, the Special Prosecutor's Office, I think you're held to a very strong standard to investigate the investigator, to make sure we do our jobs, we do... I mean, it's just a beacon of light to make sure the laws are abided by, that we operate by the rule of law. I think that's the bottom line. We need something like that. We need to check each other and do a check and balance to do a better republic for the people. Thank you. Sula, Chairman.
No, I kind of like your last two statements. You know, I like the last two statements after you answered them. You're going to look into things. That's very much appreciated, Mr. Gribs. That's why I called you. That's why we're here, to hear someone says, "I will look into it," instead of saying, "I'm too busy. I have no time for that. You know, I haven't done this, I haven't done that." So I appreciate it. Oh, and by the way, ESP? You want to be an ESP again? Too much headache. Senate means a lawyer.